Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for joining us today. We're here for the Health Related Social Needs Partner Work Session. I want to do a quick reminder that this is a place where we are building info sharing and feedback collecting and having conversation with partners who are interested in helping to make sure that people get the health-related social needs that they may be eligible for in Oregon's 1115 Medicaid waiver. And so this is not a place for media. This is not a place for CCOs. And if you are a community member, let us know in chat. And we also want to make sure that you have access to our All Come webinar, our other opportunities to get information to you. And the reason I say this is because we will get a little bit technical today. Please use the chat to let us know if we are getting too technical or not technical enough. But we really do have our partners, which could include local governments, community-based organizations, social service providers, health and medical care providers. It's a large group of folks, but we also want to make sure that we're finding the right people. So thank you so much for joining us. I hope you're in the right place and really excited to be speaking with you today. Today, we're going to be starting the same way we always start, which is me giving a really quick overview of what we mean when we're talking about the 1115 waiver here in Oregon. It might be a little duplicative for those of you who have been to all of our meetings, but we also want to make sure that we set a good baseline and we have a shared understanding. From there, I'm going to hand it off to some really excellent folks that we have who will be talking in more depth about the health-related social needs services and the provider qualifications. And after that, we will also be talking about a draft form that we have for you all today that can help us think through the information that's needed for us to determine if someone screens as eligible for these services. So we have a lot to do today, but I think it's going to be a really interesting conversation. And we will make sure that we also have plenty of time to pause, collect feedback, get questions, answer what we can, and bring back more information if there's something that we don't have an answer for that's ready today. And we will have more of these too in the future. So we hope that you'll join us in October and moving forward as well. So 1115 Medicaid waiver, what does it mean? A waiver relates to how each state has Medicaid that is really set with a standard set of rules that we get from the federal government. And so we have a plan, we have a state plan, and we also have ways in which we can adjust our state plan and we can try new things. And we can get permission to change our rules and demonstrate what that change can lead to in Oregon. So we can test new ways of doing Medicaid. We can try new things. We can innovate on what is currently in rule. And we can really make Medicaid work for Oregon in ways that maybe we haven't tried before, or maybe we haven't had the flexibility to do before. This is a five-year process. So we renew our Medicaid waiver with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and you may hear me or other folks call it CMS, every five years. And then there's a process by which we apply, there's a negotiation, and CMS accepts or rejects aspects of our proposals. And we move forward. And now we are in that phase where we have applied and we are moving from application process to implementation. And we're designing implementation for this round of the waiver. So we first had our waiver in 1994, and we've been doing it ever since. We have this most recent, the current phase of our waiver, which was approved starting October 2022. And this five years goes through the end of September of 2027. And it's not as simple as getting a list and saying, yes, no, we know exactly what we're doing. There are still some parts of the waiver this time around that are in negotiation. And we're not going to be focusing on any of the parts that are under negotiation today. We'll be talking about the things that we're in that implementation phase for. And specifically talking mostly about the health-related social needs, which is part of our current round of the waiver. We have overarching goals for this waiver, and it really centers around addressing and advancing health equity and making sure that as we build, we are building in an equitable culturally and linguistically responsive way. We want to make sure that however we can, we are ensuring that people can maintain their health coverage and really looking beyond the traditional medical model of how we do health coverage to look at those health-related social needs, things that happen outside of a doctor's office. And making sure that as we go, we are having smart and flexible spending along the way. And I really like to make sure I call out out loud that we are committed to equity in how we treat our healthier Oregon OHP members. Those are the folks who have full OHP now due to state work, regardless of their immigration status. So as we talk through the health-related social needs, know that this applies to healthier Oregon OHP members as well as other OHP members. Some of the changes underway right now are extending and expanding eligibility, especially for young children and youth, but also some additional things that we are able to do for adults. Continuous OHP eligibility and enrollment for children up to age six is one that I'm particularly excited about, and that is live right now, which is that children who are under age six, once they're on OHP, they get to keep their OHP. When it comes to people who are ages six and older, that translates into two years of continuous eligibility. We're going to be talking mostly about the health-related social needs. And those are supports that in this context really focus on housing, nutrition, and climate. But just know that we'll also be talking a little bit about outreach and engagement and other things that are built into our health-related social needs concept here. And then calling out another piece that's, we're probably not going to talk much today about, but is coverage for young adults with special healthcare needs. That's an additional side of flexibilities that we are able to implement. As we zero in on health-related social needs specifically, we're really looking at the social and economic needs that impact someone's ability to maintain their wellbeing, to maintain good health. And that can mean a whole range of things. And so there are a lot of health-related social needs out there. And then there are specific health-related social needs where we have gotten permission working with CMS to bring specific housing, nutrition, climate, and outreach and engagement supports and services. So there's the idea of the things outside of traditional health, if we're thinking in a very siloed way. There's the broad concept, which maybe I would call HRSN lowercase. And then there's what we are specifically doing in this waiver, which you'll see we're using HRSN uppercase just as a way to sort of think about like how we are able to do some things because we are working with CMS and have permission. And then there are other things that we might have to continue to make the case for as we continue to build out these programs. And now I have done my intro. Thank you all. As a note, if there's anything that wasn't clear in the intro or you want more information about, feel free to drop it in the chat. And I'm going to hand it over, I believe, to Meg next.
Hello, all. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Did my volume, excuse me, was a little bit low. Thank you. I am Meg Carey. She/her pronouns, the OHP Behavioral Health Medical Director and the medical lead for our waiver and HRSN services. These are some slides that we, the first two slides are slides that, the first three are slides that we discussed last week. So I'm going to go over them pretty briefly for those of you who weren't there last week. And for those of you who were able to join us last week, this is absolutely a repeat of the information. Somebody says you cannot hear me.
Yeah, are you able to be a little, you are a little soft compared to other folks I've heard on the line.
I am not entirely sure how to increase my volume on this. Does that work any better? No, not really. That's no louder. Let me try pulling this in.
Meg, I hear you. I wonder, can other folks hear Dr. Carey?
You cannot hear me.
I can.
Other people can hear me well. Okay, I will try to project my outside voice with you all. Thank you for turning up your volume. Now I have a song running through my head. All right. So the goals of our screening, excuse me, the goals of our service delivery process. Ideally, everyone who's potentially eligible to receive our health-related social needs services will be offered a screening, and they will have an established trusting relationship with the person or the entity, the business or the organization that does the screening so that authentic information is shared and collected. In order to promote health equity, we know and we have heard from you all that it is essential that many different entities are available to refer individuals to their CCO or to their open card, the state, for a referral for HRSN services. This includes community-based organizations and agencies, traditional healthcare workers, clinicians, and care coordinators. And the goal of this design is while it will diversify how referrals can come in, it reflects many paths for referral in the hope that we are really making it easy for members to access this service and get connected to the benefit. The CCOs and OHA, Serena's Fee for Service, or Open Card will compile all of the information needed to determine eligibility from CBOs and community-based agencies, as well as from their own information. They will ultimately be the ones to authorize the service and then specify any service details. Once the service is authorized, the CCO and Open Card will connect an HRSN service provider with the people who are referred. And that HRSN service provider ideally is welcoming, must be culturally and linguistically responsive and relevant, and accessible to meet needs. And then our goal, of course, is not just connecting members to the services, but ensuring that the members' needs are met through timely, adequate, convenient services. And if these services, given that HRSN is a short-term bridge benefit, that individuals will be connected to any long-term support from services that they need to support their health and wellbeing. Next slide. This is diagramming the flow. An access point is a point by which a potentially eligible member receives an initial screening and starts the referral to the CCO or Open Card for service authorization. As mentioned previously, the CCO and Fee for Service or Open Card will compile all additional information that may be missing and authorize or deny the service. At that point, the individual member who has the service authorized or the individual who's receiving the service will be connected with the CCO or the Open Card Care Management Team, who will, in conjunction with the individual and their identified support network, develop a person-centered service plan, refer the individual to the HRSN service provider, as well as maintain the service plan, making sure that the service is actually meeting the need. Given that we are working with populations in transition, and some of these HRSN services are only relevant when connected in a timely manner, we have a pathway whereby, once the CCO or Open Card authorizes the service, the member may be directly referred to that HRSN service provider, and the person-centered service plan will be created in parallel, but will not slow down the receipt of that HRSN service. And lastly, of course, the HRSN service provider will accept the referral, connect the member with the service, deliver the service, and document their processes and their work and invoice the CCO or the state in terms of Open Card members. Next slide. At this point, I'm going to pass it to my colleague, Jessie Wilson.
Thanks, Meg. Hi, everyone. Jessie Wilson. She/her pronouns, and I am the 1115 Waiver Strategic Operations Director. Happy to be back to present to this group. So today, I'm going to walk through our draft service provider, draft HRSN service provider minimum qualifications. So these are the minimum qualifications that all health-related social needs service providers, regardless of service type, will be required to meet. So I'll walk through the bullet points here, and then we're really looking to gather some input from you all and hear your reactions to these today. So these include being ready to serve all eligible populations that are just defined in the waiver, the approved waiver, having strong community relationships. They need to have the ability to provide culturally and linguistically responsive and trauma-informed service delivery. We expect them to have appropriate business licensing or accreditation that meets any state and industry standards. And they need to be able to receive referrals and report on the service delivery status, as well as to be able to invoice where the services provided and demonstrate a history of responsible financial practices. And then lastly, they need to be able to comply with all reporting oversight and business registration requirements. I do want to note that CCOs and the Fee for Service program will be required to ensure that the HRSN service providers do meet and maintain compliance with these minimum qualification requirements. And that we'll be going through specific qualifications for the specific services later. But these are the minimum qualifications that all service providers need to meet, regardless of which HRSN service they're providing, whether it's for climate services, housing, nutrition, or outreach and engagement. Before we go to the next slide, I also want to point out, though, that there are a couple of things on here that you may be wondering, well, I don't have that yet. And that's really a barrier to my organization being able to deliver these types of services. So I do want to remind folks that we are allowed to spend up to $119 million in community capacity building funding to support HRSN providers and partners to be able to deliver HRSN services. And that's for, to help with activities, getting ready for technology costs for new systems and tools. So the referral and billing platforms that you may need to invest in, that community capacity building funding can be used to help get you set up for that. It can also be used for development of operational processes and practices, administrative costs, so training, new staff hiring and onboarding, and so forth. So that was kind of a red flag to you that, you know, some of these things you need the funding for. We do have the community capacity building funding that we've mentioned before to help support entities. Okay, next slide, please.
Para dar a apoyar esas entidades. Muy bien, la siguiente diapositiva. I did want to check in. We do have a hand raise. Si queremos hacer un chequeo, tenemos aquí una mano levantada.
Sorry, I ended up typing it in the chat. Hi, Jessie. Just wanted to ask. And I apologize if this was covered in previous meetings about capacity building. Because I think I missed the August one. When would that funding be available for capacity building? Because I personally do see.
Las facturaciones de capacidad. Para poder proveer servicios, ¿verdad?, de trauma. Si estamos tratando de.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, Lisa, if you want to answer that question, my colleague Lisa Kreuz.
Yeah, thanks. So right now, we have a preliminary timeline for July of 2024. For that, actually going out, but that means that, let me see here, actually. The application process would open much earlier. So we're looking at probably March, April for those applications to go out. So we definitely will be doing more kind of identification for what those funds can be used for, more outreach and engagement, so that there's clarity ahead of those application windows and the funding opportunities being open. So, um, is that helpful? Beginning of 2024, we should be able to provide a lot more detail for what those funds can be used for and who can apply for them. And then the process will roll out from there.
Yes, thank you.
So sorry, my clicker went rogue. I'm really sorry, everyone. I did want to also add that I think I'm fairly certain, and if it's not certain, maybe me saying it out loud will make it certain, that we'll be returning to you all in this series with those details. So this is one of those places where we'll be bringing more details as they are ready and as we continue to work on them, and we'll want your feedback as well.
Thanks, Lisa and Jess.
I think there was a question in the chat, but I think it might be good to return to once we get through the section on provider qualifications, and then we can open it up again. Does that sound good to everyone? All right.
All right. So we're not going to talk specifically today about additional provider requirements for HRSN service providers who will be providing housing or nutrition supports. We're going to focus primarily on the services that are going live January 1st of 2024. So that's why we're starting with climate. We will come back at a later time to talk about housing and nutrition specifically. But as a reminder, under the approved waiver for HRSN services, climate supports will be available to eligible individuals who need a device for medical treatment or to prevent increased health risk. So this benefit includes the delivery and installation of medically necessary devices to an individual's residence to maintain healthy temperatures and clean air. So just reminder, some of those devices that are available include air conditioners, air filtration devices, heaters, portable power supplies, as well as refrigeration units. So in terms of providers, the specific providers for the climate services, they, not only do they need to adhere to the minimum qualifications that I outlined in the prior slide, but additionally, they need to be able to meet the qualification, the requirements on this slide. But before I go through those, I do want to note that we have included provider and vendor. We've added vendor as a definition because we know that a lot of the entities who will be delivering the climate devices may not actually be the traditional providers. They might be like Amazon, big box stores. So we're referring to those entities as vendors. And they need to meet these bullet points requirements on this slide. So they wouldn't actually be considered an HRSN service provider. They would be the entity that perhaps like CCO or the HRSN service provider would contract with to deliver and install the climate devices. So I do want to highlight that there is a difference between HRSN service provider and vendor. So however, whoever is delivering and installing the devices needs to be able to meet the qualifications on this slide. They need to have experience in providing medically necessary climate devices during a significant weather event. So when there's an emergency or a significant weather event, be able to deploy those devices quickly to individuals who are in need. They also need to have the ability to store and distribute climate devices prior or during that significant weather event, and have the ability to effectively and safely deliver climate devices to members. If they're going into the homes and installing these devices, we need to ensure that that's a safe environment, not only to the individual receiving device, but also whoever is installing the device. Okay, any questions on the difference between provider and vendor? I'll pause there just in case that wasn't clear. HRSN service provider does need to meet the minimum qualifications in the previous slide, but we know that some entities will be considered vendors, and they will be contracting with the providers or CCOs to deliver and install devices. Okay. So for this next part, I also want to remind you that in addition to the climate, nutrition, housing services as part of the approved HRSN services, outreach and engagement is also a benefit. So providers will be able to receive reimbursement for outreach and engagement services related to health-related social needs. So this includes outreach for access to HRSN services and linkages to other Medicaid or non-Medicaid benefits. It could also include individual engagement within populations that may be eligible for HRSN-related outreach and engagement services. So in terms of provider requirement, so provider who is delivering outreach and engagement services needs to meet these qualifications or these requirements. They must know principles and processes of the services that are meant to outreach to and engage populations covered by the waiver. And they also must know the information about additional services available to connect the members to those benefits or services that meet their needs. Next slide, please. So to sort of round out the information that I'm sharing today on HRSN service providers, I want to give you an overview of some of the processes that will impact HRSN service providers, or for this matter, will not impact. So first, we know that HRSN service providers will need to work with a CCO or OHA Fee for Service program to invoice for services and be recognized as a service provider. The registration process for this is still in development, and we hope to be able to share additional information with you all in the near future. Secondly, we know that HRSN service providers will not need to be currently enrolled as a Medicaid provider. So we're seeking to reduce the burden to HRSN service providers where possible. And we see this as an area where we can provide flexibility. And finally, I want to note, we have a few processes in development, including a mechanism for communication to ensure assistance is not being duplicated by other sources that all HRSN providers have access to. So this process is necessary to meet the requirement that HRSN services cannot be duplicative, and they can't supplant existing federal, state, or local funding. So we still need to develop a process for that. Secondly, we need a mechanism that verifies and communicates that a referral has been received and processed by an HRSN service provider. So as required by the approved waiver, there needs to be a report on the status the status of the HRSN services, whether that's communicated via Community Information Exchange Platform or its email or regular mail or fax. There does need to be that information shared about the status of a member's referral for HRSN services. And then the third bullet point there, subcontracting option. So we've been asked the question about HRSN providers' ability to subcontract with other HRSN providers to deliver HRSN services. And what I'll say is that it's the state's goal and intent to allow what makes HRSN service providers successful. And we hear that subcontracting with a partner organization may be necessary. However, we have some logistical and operational questions that we need to work through before we can definitively approve subcontracting. So I'll pause there to see if there are any questions or comments before turning it back over to Dr. Carey.
I see a hand up. Go ahead and speak.
Hello. Can you describe a little bit more what you're picturing with the subcontracting option?
And I would invite, sure, but I'll invite some of my colleagues if they want to weigh in. I don't know that we've fully worked out what that would be. We just know that's been asked as an option to help CBOs be successful in delivering services. I don't know if, Meg, you want to weigh in on that?
So Jessie, maybe I could just add that we heard from CBOs, especially during the COVID. So Jessie, maybe I could just add um, that we heard from CBOs, especially during the COVID um, period. That it was helpful for them to contract with larger um, CBOs that had some of the infrastructure that um, maybe they did not have or. Um, that could benefit um, them being able to provide their services, especially maybe to smaller populations. Um, and so that is something that we're just exploring here, having heard that that was very useful. Um, just need to work through some of the considerations around that. So wanted to make sure that um, we acknowledge the feedback that we've heard and that we're working through what that could look like. And Meg, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. If you have more to add, happy to hear it.
Thanks Lisa. All right. I think if there aren't additional questions, um.
I have a question. I'm so sorry. So one of the things that I was thinking about, um, it was like either last week or the week before with the presentation is the capacity for CCOs to respond. To these um, SRN uh, requests. And so what I'm wondering is, is they're going to be like this engagement where they're sharing with us? Like what their capacity is, like what their plan is? Cause it kind of feels with, you know, phase one rolling out so soon, us not having our SRN, uh, SRSN service providers yet. Not really sure what that's going to look like yet, who's qualified for that. It just kind of feels a little like this and just, I don't know, I'm just hoping for some clarity.
I want to make sure I understand the question. So if you're contract, contracting with a CCO, what that level of communication would look like coming from them around uh, the plan to implement services?
Yes, absolutely. So like what the capacity building for the, cause it from my understanding, we're leaving it up to the CCOs to determine how they're going to per. Build that capacity within, within their organization. So for example, where is the communication? Or what is that communication going to look like for us at the ground level? So are, you know, like, are there going to be continuous, you know, sessions held? Where uh, CCOs are sharing at the community level, what their capacity is like and just informer- information sharing.
I am wondering, I think there's a related question in the chat that is more about the, like an, an individual case and how those, those teams, as we talk through the. CCO versus a provider versus maybe that entry point. So I'm going to read the question because I think there's the community and then the individual aspect, both are at play. And I wonder if talking through both might help us. Um.
And Jessica, oh yeah. Sorry, it would also help me personally, if we go back to that slide that talks about the screening and the intake. Because I think I understand Kimberly's question. I have the same question myself about uh, the CCO's capacity, capacity. How much do they know about the providers that are listed at that point? Cause I know some, yeah, that is, is that Kimberly, what you're asking is like, you know, the CCO sounds like we are the access. Um, I have so many questions and so many real examples based on what we provide currently. So um, I know people can self-identify, they can self-nominate, right? Uh, people who requi- receive services. And then there's also case managers, social workers. So if it's up to the CCO to compile information needed to determine eligibility and authorizes or denies the service. I think Kimberly and I are wondering, what does that capacity look like realistically? So that they are being equitable, they're not just defaulting to the widely statewide known provider. Like, I'm just going to say an exa- uh, uh, an example that's specific to my section, which is nutrition, nutrition. Everybody knows meals on wheels people, but not everybody knows a milk crate kitchen grassroots organization that's only been around for three years, let's say.
Oh, I think I'm, I'm getting the question now, but I just want to ask a clarifying question. It's the term capacity that's throwing me a little bit off and I'm, I'm trying to understand the question a little bit better. So I think what I'm hearing is the CCO capacity and maybe what's being asked is. Um, are the CCOs aware of all the service providers in their services, service area that could be service providers? Is, is that what the question is? Like, how do um, how do CCO, what kind of inventory are CCOs going to be doing of service providers in their services area? Is that what you're asking, Kimberly? I'm just trying to figure out um, kind of the substance of the question so that we can get, give you a good answer.
Yeah, so capacity in the sense of how are our CCOs going to meet the needs of individuals seeking HRSN services?
I do want also flag for us that whether we have a ready answer today or not, this is really valuable feedback to be getting. And I think the answer has to be complete if CCOs aren't in the room. So I do want to call that out too. There might be um, other places to continue this really important conversation.
And Lisa, how you understood and interpreted the question and from my point is accurate. Like, do they have the inventory, are they up to date with the list of service providers? What if some of us are more than 75% done with our own process of being enlisted as a service provider and meeting those compliance requirements? So um, yeah, I know that this is a big question, right? But I guess we're just looking for like uh, some assurance that perhaps we won't miss out. Because CCOs and FFS weren't provided all the resources that they need to authorize or deny the service.
That's helpful. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Kind of reading Yoni's question out loud too, because I think it relates to this slide unless Jessie, I'm interrupting too fast and you had a direct response.
Go ahead and read the question and then I'll weigh in.
Okay. Um, the question is, can you explain if the HRSN screener at a CBO will be included in the care management team once services are approved? Also, what if there's a case manager from a community-based organization that was not the health-related social need screener? Is there a pathway for that person to be connected to the care management team?
I can take this one. I think that, that in, in the description of the person's centered service plan. It is required that the member designate who ought to be part of that planning process. And the way that we've envisioned it is that members, um, individuals who have really close relationships with community partners. Who are well-positioned to um. Help design that service plan that's going to best meet that member's needs. Because they know the person well, they know what has been tried in the past, et cetera. That that uh, is a relationship that should be maintained and reinforced. And we recognize that it's, that uh, individuals don't always have the closest relationships with CCOs. Um, we also want to be able to use this benefit to help strengthen the relationship that individuals have with CCOs. And CCOs, again, an open card as well, have with members. And so I think that your question is really speaking to the bridging that is inherent in this benefit being successful. That we are really, the, the, the part of the, the innovation of this benefit is bridging the medical system with uh, social services systems. Housing, housing providers and housing service systems, nutrition systems. And, and the care coordination and care management is going to be one of the mechanisms for connecting that bridge. And again, it's not bringing housing and nutrition into the healthcare system, but it's really creating better bidirectional flows of information. Now, uh, I think none of us are under any illusion that this is going to work great and this is going to work um, ideally uh, initially. And that that's part of, that is going to be part of the learning process and the refinement process. And, and I would anticipate that as we get feedback on how it's really working, we'll be able to better strengthen our rules, our contracts and our expectations. Um, to, to reinforce those, those connections. Yoni, does that address what you were hoping that we would address with that or some additional thoughts? And, and certainly Jessica, Jessie and Lisa, any other thoughts that you have on this? Please speak up.
Hi there. Yes, thank you so much. I think, you know, um, so I, I work for Northwest Pilot Project, which does um, housing stabilization services for seniors. And you know, what I'm seeing um, at our end, having met with many of our caseworkers is that um. You know, we're kind of doing workarounds around the healthcare system to help clients. Cause we are not, we don't have medical providers on staff. So when someone needs vision, when someone needs behavioral health, substance use disorder, physical health, we are 55 and over. So there's some physical health deterioration, um, that's just natural, you know, um, at that age. But especially if someone's been living on the streets. And so, you know, we're often the first point of contact where folks will come to us and say. Um, something's not working or I'm low on my meds. And it's trying to build that bridge that you were referring to, um, where we can kind of just, if we're going to be holders of that information. There's a bridge to be able to kind of um, connect with the health system to say, we know this person really well. They're having trouble navigating the, the, you know, getting their meds or whatever. Um, and that's kind of part of the broader benefit, but it also is centered in this HRSN relationship. Um, so I guess my question was. Do, in order to kind of have everything um, kind of work with that's um, like uh, you know, with that, with that nexus. Um, do you need to be the registered HRSN screener and service provider? I, I'm guessing yes, right?
I, I actually, I don't, I don't think that we have fully defined that yet. And, and that is, uh, I'm thrilled that you're bringing up this question and bringing up this question particularly in this group. Because I think uh, we would like to design this so it works well. And that we really need your voices and your experience and your guidance to figure out what does that look like? And, and what is reasonable given where the system is at? And, and also recognizing the diversity of HRSN service providers, referral points, and as you say, partners in this.
Yeah, yeah.
One flag that I, that I want to make sure that I'm calling out explicitly is that one of the challenges in this bridge is um, protected health information. And we know that a lot of community-based organizations and agencies are not HIPAA-covered entities, entities that are um. Beholden to the HIPAA protection rules and oversight and accountability that healthcare organizations are. And so because of that, uh. Organizations and agencies can give all the information and all the protected health information to CCOs. But CCOs can't necessarily give that information back. And so when we talk about participation in a care management team or a care coordination team, we're going to really need to think through. What information can be shared to who and how? Because it may be that some information can be shared, but not other information, because it's protected information for all the reasons that we all know, that we want to protect. Um, protect the health information of those we work with. And particularly knowing that individuals have conditions that are highly stigmatized and that um, have been used to harm them. So I, yeah, I, I mean, I think I don't, we don't have a great answer. And fortunately, we don't have a great answer because this is an area for, for further design and, and where your input is going to be important and helpful.
No, I found your answer to be great actually, and I'm looking forward to more partnerships. So thank you all. You all are doing great work, so.
We have a lot of really thoughtful questions in the chat that have popped up along the lines of what to expect from. CCOs and what is expected of CCOs.
Jessica, I think I can touch on a couple of the questions um, asked earlier. So um, there's still some work to be done around uh, network adequacy standards for sure. But we do know that CCOs um, will be required to make HRSN services accessible to members in all of their service areas. So um. Uh, that, that should speak to some of the questions. Um, and that they'll also need to ensure that uh, members have uh, choice of their HRSN service provider. I think someone was asking um, earlier about that. Um, and if there's, and if not, that there's an alternative um, method. So. We are putting contractual requirements in place uh, to support some of these processes that I think some of these questions are about. Um, but what else are we missing in the chat, Jessica, that maybe we can touch on?
I think this one is um, probably something we'll be able to return to with more detail in the future. But um, the capacity building funds, does that include access points in addition to HRSN providers? Or is it only for the providers?
Those are um, dedicated for HRSN providers.
So while folks may be represented on both ends of this flow, we're looking at, they have to provide at least one HRSN service in order to qualify for those funds?
Yes, and some of this, we are receiving federal funds um, for those capacity or infrastructure dollars. Um, and so that is a CMS dictated requirement.
Thank you.
It's a great question.
Some questions about timelines for CCOs to onboard folks. I'm not sure we have. A ready answer there.
No, you don't.
And then some specifics about billing that I think we probably need to return to with more detail in the future. Um, this isn't a question, but I want to read it out loud. I'm quite concerned for rural communities that do not have the diversity of providers more urban areas have. How has OHA heard from our more rural counties about their needs and barriers to implementation? Uh, that was a question. I just got stuck on the first half and already knew I wanted to say it out loud. My apologies.
And then I will say to that question, um, I think that that, as, as Lisa mentioned, that's one of the, one of the sources where we're getting the questions about subcontracting with. And so again, the. How do we make this benefit work in all regions of the state? So that every uh, OHP member who's eligible for this can access these services. And it really, there isn't inequities for individuals given their geographic location.
And I think this might be something that I say out loud. Um. Jessie started talking about this, but um, how do we ensure an equitable distribution of referrals among HRSN providers? I think that's a really great question for us to be asking. Um. And I don't have an answer there, but I just wanted to call it out because it's in the chat and I want to say it out loud for the recording. And then I have a question, looks like slash recommendation about having forms in place to avoid the HIPAA. Potential problems around protected health information. And I want to check in with folks to see if we have or have not covered your questions. I know we've been doing some paraphrasing and sometimes something can get lost in that. I'm also aware that we have a form to show you, so I do want to make sure we have time for that too. Go ahead.
Jessica, um, I saw a really great question from Tabitha Jensen. At 1:50 PM, it says, CCOs often offer benefits, but not the actual staff to deliver care coordinated, coordinate and case management. What was this question already read? And answered?
Oh, thanks for calling this out. I think we may have talked around it, but maybe haven't directly. Cause I think the next part is, will they act as lead to route referrals to screeners? And how will folks on Open Card or Indian Health Services get connected to screeners? Is this a place where we come back with more information?
I think, you know, I, I think. We may have more information and we may be following the lead of what. What works and what needs to happen. And I, and I say that because um, we obviously know that we, CCOs are different and CCOs are different in how they implement their, their care coordination and, and their staff capacity. And that's also a dynamic. And that's also a dynamic, a dynamic thing that, that staffing fluctuates. And so there will likely be, excuse me, differences in how this happens. That, yes, CCOs ideally will act as referral sources to screeners or access points that they know may best serve their members and that maybe have the cultural and linguistic connection and match that the CCOs don't offer. And how folks on OpenCard or Indian Health Services will get connected to the screeners. I, I agree that that will likely be a different process. And, and obviously, the nine federally recognized tribes and our urban Indian Health Services will be directing their process flows.
Yep.
And then I think I also want to say that I welcome you all to also bring these conversations to your local CCOs. I think some of these answers, because the geographies are going to be very different and the needs are going to be very different. There might be some things that on a statewide level from OHA, we can't answer the same way your local partners and your local CCOs can. So I do want to call that out, too. And I know this is a place where we've sort of carved out a partner-only space, but I don't want you to think that you have to only come to us with questions and thoughts. And I think it'd be really great. I want to really offer a hope that regional connections can happen, too. And, and let us know if you would like some help with that. We'd like to hear how that's going as well. And, oh, Yoni, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, just in terms of getting back to this bridge and the integration of social services and healthcare, one helpful framing that someone recently shared with me is, you have kind of two groups of folks that are stuck in this care coordination conversation or just conceptualization. On the one hand, you have folks who are currently connected to the healthcare system in one way or the other, who are awaiting discharge from the hospital or they are kind of in, affiliated with some sort of behavioral health service. And there's a need to stabilize them with a housing resource, right? So, you know, there's a need from the health system to connect them to social service providers. And then, on the other hand, you have kind of on the CBO, at least I will speak for my CBO only, but you have individuals who were working with them on the housing stabilization piece. And we've housed many of them. There's also a long queue of folks who have not yet been housed. But what's becoming more and more clear with the acuity issue is that even if you house someone, there are medical issues, behavioral health issues, substance use disorder issues that cannot be addressed by a social worker. And having that defined touch point between agencies, between the social service provider and the health system, helps kind of make that bilateral communication happen. If, and, and, and that's important, because we have to be mindful of kind of creating a mechanism that just sends folks defined by the health system down the road to social services when we're already working with a lot of folks who have some really significant needs and we've already potentially housed them or are working to house them.
Thank you. I'm realizing we have more excellent feedback than we probably have time to do justice. I'm going to check in with our subject matter experts on some of the questions that popped up in the last couple of minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, there was one question there about tracking, tracking process to make sure shared equity is being implemented with both CCO and HRSN. So what I can say is that we will be developing evaluation metrics to, to be able to track some of this and learn about service utilization, referrals. And equity is absolutely embedded in, will be embedded in that as well as, as sort of centering the, the metrics and the outcomes that we would like to evaluate. So we're still waiting for some guidance on that from CMS. But I just wanted to acknowledge that, yes, we were definitely going to be tracking that, that process in progress. And I don't know if Lisa wants to add anything to that, but I saw that question in there. I wanted to make sure to speak to it.
No, you covered that well. We are, we're definitely waiting for more from CMS and happy to share that when we get it.
See a question, if we have a list, that's public knowledge of community-based organizations who are interested in providing these health-related social needs benefits. And I'm not sure we have that. I wanted to call that out, that I, yeah, I think that starting partnerships is something we would love to help facilitate. And that might be something that, once again, might be better served regionally than statewide, I'm wondering. But I, I wanted to say it out loud, because I saw it in the chat and I thought it was a good question. And I'm trying to speak as many of these as possible. And my apologies if I've missed some of them.
Yeah, and Jessica, just to speak to that, I'm not aware of a list specific to that purpose. Yeah.
And then I did also see a question asking for more detail about who comprises the care management team. I'm not sure if we have more details, or if we want to maybe bring more details in the future.
We have the requirements in our special terms and conditions or negotiated conditions with CMS on our person-centered service plans. And this aligns with other expectations for a person-centered service plan for other Medicaid benefits, such as the 1915I program. That, and that describes the team that will be making the person-centered service plan. It includes the individual OHP member, their natural supports that they identify as, that they identify for participating in this. It may include a guardian, well, if the individual has a guardian, it would include a guardian. But it may include other natural supports. And then it includes somebody from the CCO. And I think that this is where there is space and innovation for how to include the community-based natural supports as well as community-based service providers that that individual has a strong relationship with. I think as Yoni has spoken to and as other community partners have spoken to, these relationships are oftentimes built over months to years of relationship interactions. And that can really inform the care planning in, in a, in a fundamental and important way that would lead to better health outcomes for the individual, better health for the individual. And so I think that this is where we have sort of the minimum requirements and there's a space and opportunity for, for thinking creatively in the best service of that number.
Thank you. I want to make sure we get to the service and eligibility need form. So I wonder if now might be a good time to transition to that, knowing that this is definitely far from being a completed, done conversation. So I want to give a quick pause to see if there's any burning questions or updates. And I'll go ahead and move us onwards. Take it away, Meg.
Absolutely. So this next slide is a repeat of a slide that we shared last week as well, just to be clear about that. And, and my hope is, and our hope with this discussion, is that this will carry out for the, the conversation that we have just started. So we will have a templated service and eligibility need form that will include the elements that are required for determining eligibility and authorizing the HRSN service. This form will not constitute the authorization, but it contains the information that CCOs and OpenCard fee-for-service the state need to be able to authorize that. It includes verification that the individual is a part of one of the eligible populations. It will include the social need criteria, that this individual needs one of the HRSN services. And it will include clinical criteria. In order to justify these HRSN services as a Medicaid benefit, they need to be medically and clinically appropriate. And the way that CMS and the state, thus the state is defining medical appropriateness is that the individual has a, meets the clinical criteria and a social need criteria. The clinical criteria is simply that the individual has a health condition that would be benefited by having one of the housing-related services, the climate devices or the nutrition services. The fourth component that is needed to authorize this service is the service specification. What type of housing service? Of the nutrition services, which ones, for how long? What might be the, who would be the appropriate HRSN service providers to best meet that need? So those are the four elements of the service form. To be eligible, as we've discussed, individuals cannot have duplicative services from other funding sources. And some of the HRSN services have additional specific criteria to, in order to access them. For example, our rent and utility benefits will not be available to all potentially eligible populations, but to a subsection. Next slide. The minimum requirements, the minimum information needed to send a referral to the CCO or to the state OpenCard is attestation from the member, from the individual, that they are aware of the referral for HRSN services and they are interested in determining if they're eligible in receiving an HRSN service. Secondly, member contact information will be needed, because the CCO will need to be able to contact that member about the service authorization, potentially to get more information. And lastly, a description of as much information as had, as the, the referring entity or the, the access point has about the service needs. Maybe it's pretty high level. We know this individual needs some nutrition services. CCO, OpenCard, can you please help specify what those are? Or maybe it's really, really specific. We know this individual needs pantry stocking. We are a nutrition service provider and, and more details, for example, can be provided initially. Referrals should include information that's already known or that can be easily collected within the scope of the relationship with the individual. Meaning that not all access points or HRSN service providers who are making the referral will have or should have all of that information that's necessary for service eligibility determination and authorization. However, the flip side of that, of course, is that we know it is harmful to repeatedly ask individuals the same questions over and over again. And so we are really working with this benefit to reduce the duplicity in, in information gathering and looking to compile information that is already known or is readily available. To this, HRSN access points, the, the referring sources will, will present the information that they know. And then, as it was mentioned in an earlier slide, the CCOs or fee-for-service will be responsible for compiling any additional information that's needed. Maybe they have that in their claim databases or maybe they need to reach back out to the individual member to collect that information directly. Next slide. The next two slides are illustrative sections of the eligibility and service need form. The first page here is the framing of what this form is for. It outlines that the individual is able to self-refer. They could fill out this form on their own behalf or that they can work with a partner, a partner agency, organization to help fill out this form. And then instructions on how to submit this form to the health plan. Next slide. And this is a, I appreciate somewhat small picture of what the information and how the information is organized on this form. This is the form that you all will have access to. And we welcome your inline edits, your high-level edits. This form is very much in draft. We know that it needs to be, the language needs to be more accessible. We know that there are some word choices that we need to modify. And we really look forward to your guidance and direction on how, on the changes that you think you would need for this form to make it accessible and usable. And then in our next meeting, on the 10th of October, we will discuss with you your feedback, so that we can compile and record that and, and incorporate it into the revision of this form. One of the things to consider is, who is the audience for this form? Should we, should we have a form that is for community-based organizations, agencies? Should we have a form that is for members? And we, and we welcome and would love your feedback on that. If there is a default, I request that you look at writing this form for members as a form that can, that members can be able to fill out on their own. Figuring that if we can make this form accessible for individuals to fill out on their own, then it will likely also be accessible for organizations and agencies as well to fill out. But there may need to be slightly different forms or, or maybe a guidance document for agencies and organizations who are filling out this form. Our intent in giving you this information is to give you a preview of the kind of information that referral sources will need to collect. And it also gives you a sense of some of the eligibility criteria for these HRSN benefits.
I do see a question. Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's my, I'm thinking about here. Yep, please.
On whether an authorized representative or designated payee could sign or fill out this on a member's behalf.
Yeah, I think that, that we anticipate that a payee or a guardian or a designated individual absolutely would be the right person to fill out this form. We just need to make sure that the member consents to that. And so there is a section that includes member consent, where they would need to sign that they, they want this service and that they are in agreement about this other individual helping them fill out this form. This form, we will translate into, at the very least, the 13 most common languages in Oregon. But, you know, again, this is definitely a form that needs to be translated into multiple languages.
I will repeat out loud. Yeah. That we, this document that you're looking at right now, we have it as a Word document that we will be sending out to everyone who's here today. And then our hope is that we then come together and talk through this in more detail next time around, knowing that we're already well over halfway through our time here today. And we want to make sure that we really spend good time and energy together on this. So if you are able to make it on the 10th, just know that that is our plan. And that is our hope, that we'll be able to have some good conversation on what's going to work and what isn't going to work. Thank you. I do want to see if anyone has any immediate thoughts, because we do have a little bit of time. Is there going to be a section regarding climate needs?
Yeah.
I'm realizing, is this, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
So this is Janine, and I'm a community health worker with Valley Family Healthcare. And currently, we work with our CCO in regards to the flexible service request. Um, so is this going to be kind of eliminating that program? Or is this just going to be an extension of that program?
I'll take that one. Great question, Janine. This is not eliminating the health-related services or the flex services that CCOs have the discretion to offer beneficiaries. So this is going to be in addition to that. So HRSN will only be for individuals who qualify for HRSN. So there may be individuals that, right now, would only receive these services through HRS. Once these, once HRSN is implemented, they will qualify through that, through that path. So if individuals do not qualify for HRSN, so if they're not in the transition populations, they don't need the clinic they don't need the clinical or risk fact criteria, they can still potentially receive devices through the CCO's HRS program. So I know it's confusing because, well, it can be because HRS versus HRSN. But hopefully that answers your question. It's not going away. It just may mean that individuals are receiving devices through a different pathway than before. Does that help?
So clarifying question. Sure. So just so that I'm understanding, so for individuals who, let's say, have OHP and they're part of their CCO, then we can do this, the, you know, the HRS program. So for individuals who, let's say, have Medicare and they don't qualify for services through a CCO, would they be beneficials, benefits, benefits through this program? Or no, because they are not part of the CCO?
So no, they, if they are not part of the, if they're not a member of the Oregon Health Plan, they would not qualify for health-related social needs. So they have to be enrolled in the Oregon Health Plan, and then they have to meet one of the transition populations. We shared that in a, in a previous meeting, but we can properly recirculate materials. And then they have to meet clinical and social risk criteria. So that first, first eligibility criteria is to be on the Oregon Health Plan.
I did want to offer one bit, just because I come from eligibility. So I have a little bit of, I want to call out that there's a difference between being on Medicare and the full OHP benefits. It is possible to be duly eligible, and those folks have a choice between being open card or fee, or open card or on a CCO. And so that's one group of people. There are also benefits that are only there to help people pay for Medicare with Medicaid dollars. And I think those folks do not have full OHP plus. And so they might not be eligible for HRSN or HRS benefits. Did I say that right? Jessie, because I do think there are two different populations, and it's really easy to get them confused because it's, it's folks who are on Medicare, but depending on their income and other factors, they might have full Medicaid, or they might just have that help with their Medicare costs. And so that's a difference.
Yep, you're right, Jessica.
Thank you. Now that I've, oh yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just wanted to add one more clarification between HRSN and HRS. And that is that fee-for-service is entitled on eligible for HRSN, where they have not had that ability for HRS. So I just want to make it really clear that fee-for-service, open card members also are eligible for HRSN if they fit into those qualifying criteria that were mentioned.
Thanks for explaining that acronym in the chat, Jessie. HRS is Health Related Services for CCO Members, easily confused with Health Related Social Needs Services, which is what we're talking about today. And I do see, Sherilyn, your hand is up.
Thank you, Jessica. Since the first eligibility requirement for, for this, for HRSN is that they're, they are an OHP, correct? Will there be a big push for raising awareness, community-wide, Oregon-wide, that, you know, about OHP, who's eligible? So I personally know a lot of people in my circles who don't even realize that they are eligible and that they qualify for OHP for various reasons. And so I wonder if that will be addressed because obviously while this is a great, you know, benefit, it's extension. If people aren't an OHP, then I'm afraid it will be underutilized. Just curious.
The, yeah, one of the benefits of this benefit, so one of the services of this benefit is actually to connect individuals and enroll individuals who are, thank you, yes, the outreach and engagement and linkage to benefits. So to enroll individuals who are Medicaid eligible into Medicaid so they can receive this benefit and frankly, all of the other Medicaid benefits that they are entitled to.
Great, thank you.
And I just want to let you all know that I popped over to what's the appendix of the materials that we'll be sending you all after this work session for just this sort of situation where someone asks a question, we're like, ooh, we have some background information we could quickly pop up. So we'll continue to build out that library too. And know that you'll have access to this. It wasn't what we were planning on going through today, but we're ready. And I'm realizing, Janine, did I cut you off before you were done with your question?
No, I have a second question.
Okay. Go for it.
Okay, so this is not on the topic of the, you know, the, the needs portion of it. But it is a topic of the continuous eligibility for individuals who are, you know, up to six years old and then for the adults. So I had a patient come in last week and she received a notice in the mail. And on it, I was able to explain to her how she went from Magi Adult to Magi Advanced. And then on there, it also said that her renewal date was going to be 6/24/24, but then it said continuous enrollment until 6/24/25. So she was really confused. I was confused. So is there, sort of, these documents going to be a little bit easier to understand? Or are they just going to be confusing?
That's a great question. I think one piece of this that is confusing right now is that we are in the process of getting our systems fully updated on continuous eligibility. So I believe I heard that while the systems on the backend are doing the right thing now and giving continuous eligibility, there are some places where our notifications and our forms are being updated so they are accurate. So there is some confusing information right now that we are working on fixing. And I think to your point as to will it be confusing or will it be clear? I think there will be both happening, and I hope that we can open up spaces like this where we can continue to dig into where it's confusing and where it's not working the way maybe originally anticipated or what we thought we were doing. But I will hand it over to the smart people who know more details. But I did want to give, that's the part of this that I understand and I wanted to share that.
Okay. Um, so yeah.
I have nothing else to add.
Yeah, other, other than just to appreciate everyone's time showing up in these spaces and pointing things out that we can follow up on. I, it's really important and helpful.
Yeah. Um, so, because this was the first time that I've seen this kind of notice. And so it was kind of like, I had to take, like, I had to find it in their, their one because she didn't have it on her. And so then I pulled it up and I was like, okay, give me a minute. I have to go and review this. So is there like a, a how to read this form so that we can explain it to our patients a little bit easier? Because I know that it took me a minute to be able to understand exactly what that document was saying. In the meantime, while all of the bugs are getting fixed in the, in the background.
I think that's a really great recommendation, and I think we'll have to connect with our operations folks. I don't want to make any promises. I cannot directly immediately make happen. But I think that anything that we can do to help clarify what our notices are saying, what they're saying versus what we are doing, if there's any places where that isn't in alignment. And then if you are a member, I'm going to do a quick plug. I'm going rogue today. For the Community Partner Outreach Program, as far as additional details and additional resources on enrollment eligibility, helping people get, use, keep their OHP, there's a really awesome group of folks and network of community partners who does a lot of this work. And so there might be some places where the regional outreach coordinators at the Community Partner Outreach Program, so the rocks at CPo, because we love our acronyms. They may be able to give you more guidance than we can today because they are in the thick of it and they are doing this work every day. So it takes a village, and I would love to connect folks where appropriate, or you might already be connected but haven't talked to them recently. They're a great group of folks to be asking for more, more resources on eligibility and enrollment and notices for OHP. And we will also, like, OHP is big. We'll try our best to connect the dots, but I don't want to stand in the way of people making those good connections with that team. So there's my plug, my unsolicited plug for today for that, that group of folks.
Yeah, I, I know who my rock is. I work with her. Every month, we have our meetings that we go to, and she actually used to work at the clinic that I currently work at, so I know her personally as well. So yeah, I will definitely reach out to her. I just know that, that, that it popped up Friday of last week. And like, then there was the notice, and then MMIS was showing something, and then the benefit trackers from our PSRs were showing something totally different. And so we were just like, we don't know what's right, what's wrong, what, where the in-between is. So, but I'll definitely expedite that to my rock, and maybe she can get answers for me.
That sounds great. I don't want to accidentally slow down a solution by taking it through our waiver processes. So if there, if you are seeking more information or your rock is having trouble, feel free to reach out to me as well. But I bet that they have more resources than I do right now, and I think they'll do great. I see a question about if there will be a trial period of time upon when this program starts. That's an interesting question.
I kind of think. Did I mean like a pilot?
It's an interesting question to me, I think, because this waiver is, is that trial, I think. I think we're in it, and it's going to have different pieces that are coming onboard in, over time. The trial may be by doing it, but I defer to Lisa and Meg to see if there are more details.
No, that's accurate. This is the demonstration. We are phasing it in, so services will be phased in, climate services to begin with. And I think we've talked about that phasing over time. So that is the, kind of the space we're hoping to allow for more development within the delivery system. Definitely more information and details will be shared prior to that. But I would say you described that accurately.
Thank you for the question. I, I thought I saw hands.
It, it was me. I wanted to ask, because that got me thinking too. This is the trial, like you said, Jessica. And I think Meg has addressed this question about the screening and the intake process, HIPAA considerations, because there will be service providers that are, you know, aware of HIPAA maybe even, right? So I wonder if the committee or the planning crew have thought about whatever mechanism or referral intake process is, whatever you call it. I think you get my drift. Whatever intake process tool, whether it's online or by paper or a combination of both, is decided or the chosen one. And will there be an opportunity to pilot it out among people like us from, you know, different members of this, like CBO, CCOs, FFS, OHP assisters, people who are on OHP, people who aren't on OHP? Just to like, see how it works and provide enough opportunity to, you know, like a little sandbox, if you may, before it goes, before they implement it.
I appreciate that question. And instead, having received that feedback, recognizing that feedback, for those of us that continue to be direct service providers living that feedback, our design process is actually to not require a standard form for a couple of reasons. One is because of the value and the knowledge that we have to stop asking members the same information over and over again. It's harmful. And so we recognize that community partners and community organizations and agencies oftentimes have this information, ask it in existing forms. And we want to be really careful to not set up another essentially siloed form that you have to march through from beginning to end, asking the same question. We also know that these questions need to be integrated into other intake processes. And ideally, that's a, that's a flow and a seamless process so that individuals experience that their holistic health is being attended to and, and honored, and that HRSN, HRSN, is one tool to address health. The flip side is that we know there needs to be some standardization around these questions so that everybody who is eligible will meet the criteria. We know that we need to be real clear on what information is needed in order to make the referrals, determine eligibility, and make the authorization. And so that's, you know, that's what we're trying to balance with this eligibility and service need form. This will really be the template of the, the information that's needed. And then we look forward to essentially you all being playing in your own sandboxes of telling us, how do you, how do you shape these questions into your current documentation and screening flows? We recognize that CCOs who are asking about HRS services, for example, may already be asking these questions. And so again, they don't need to be re-asked separately, independently for health-related social needs benefit, HRSN benefit. Does that address, I think, that tension and that dance that you're raising?
I clarified my question that it's less about the forms that's going to be used, but more about testing the process and doing a beta versus, prior to a statewide rollout.
Because this is a Medicaid benefit, we're obliged to implement it statewide for, for all the eligible populations for that service. And so, getting back to sort of the earlier question. But I think, you know, I think the flip side is, is we're thinking and talking a lot about, how do we rapidly get information so that we can have a more rapid refinement process? And, and we anticipate over these next few years of implementation and phased rollout that, that, for example, we will get really good information from you all about how the climate device implementation is going that, that we hope to be able to apply to the housing and nutrition. But we also recognize that it, you know, it always takes time to work out such a huge benefit in our systems and that we need to give systems time for figuring out what their feedback is. Lisa, Jessica, do you have anything else to add to that? Or what else do you have to add to that, I should, I should say?
No, I think you covered it. Oh, sorry, Lisa.
I was just going to say the same thing. Thank you.
And then I think, aha, I see a hand. Please go ahead.
Yes, this is Shakila, and it's just going back to the trial or test period, as you would want to say. The only reason why I bring that up is that, that we know how programs in the beginning, how they are meant to be working, but we know that there's flaws in those programs and systems as they are being firstly started. So my thing is, is there going to be some flexibility in that as well in the programs when they start up, when the program starts up? And also with the test, that's what the test, kind of the test phase period I was talking about.
Could you maybe describe a little bit more, kind of, which flexibilities that you're thinking about or in which areas you're thinking about flexibilities that may be needed?
Shakila, you might be talking on you.
I can, yes, I can hear you now. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I could, I could barely hear you. For some reason, my phone was acting up. I can, yes, I can hear you now. Sorry, can you repeat that? I could, I could barely hear you. For some reason, my phone was acting up.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get clarification about kind of more specificity on the areas of flexibility that you're most concerned about or that you're thinking of in that question, just thinking through which there's many different components of this, so just trying to elevate the specific areas.
Sure. So I'm going to say for all of the areas, because we know that there's going to be issues of, in, in things coming up, not the normal within the box of the requirements and all of that, that there's going to, things are going to come up that aren't within that box. And so is there going to be room for flexibility to change or is it, you know, are we at a test phase to where, okay, this works, we see that this doesn't work, we're going to be cha, you know, changing this out. So I just wanted to bring that, bring that up.
Yeah, I, I think I'm going to have an annoying response. I'm going to ask others to help me not be so kind of irritating in the response that is some of this is dictated by CMS, so we have less flexibility in what is dictated by CMS. We are receiving federal funds. So we have some things that we just don't have flexibility on, and that's part of the populations that are defined and the criteria. So in some ways we don't have flexibility. I, I think overall our approach is to figure out how we can be flexible because there is so much that is unknown and that has not been done before. So that's kind of been irritating some, some areas. Yes, you know, we can, some areas we can't. Meg or Jessica, can you help fill that out a little bit more?
I think something that caught my ear right off the bat is when we say flexible, I think health-related services or the flex funds. So there are ways, for example, that CCOs can be flexible in ways that OHA cannot. So that is something, for example, that we could lean into is there could be times when people are not eligible for these health-related social needs, but that doesn't mean there aren't other pathways by which we can work with CCOs or work with other funding streams and other opportunities. And I think that is one of the central things we really hope that we're able to do well, which is not come in here as a shiny new thing that, you know, it's our way and that's the only way you can get help, but really is starting to blend into the really complex tapestry of social services that are available out there, which I know is also not a satisfying answer. But that's maybe what I would add here.
And the only additional thing Shakila that I would add is we, we agree with you. We are under no illusion that this is going to work out in the beautiful way that we have all envisioned and dreamt and mapped out on whiteboards and, and it, it will have to be a work in progress because that's, you know, that's how these programs that benefit human beings are. And, and again, I think the complexity and the really awesome innovation of this is not only will we be able to blend existing CCO funding sources and OHP benefits, but also some of the grant and other funded services that exist in communities that, that are also being used. And it's, you know, it's again, it's how do you, how do you build this, as Lisa said, sometimes restrained and rigid Medicaid funding into a more diverse network? Tapestry, Jessica, as, as you painted the picture of, of funding and resources. And I think that that will be some of the nuance and hopefully some of the, the innovations that really make our system stronger and more resilient for supporting health and wellbeing. And I think that the refinement and, you know, we trust that y'all are going to speak up and be loud when things really aren't working. And, and I think that part of the, you know, what you're hearing from us is we're not quite sure where the solutions are going to come from. Are the solutions going to come from how we can refine this benefit or the solution is going to come from how this benefit can be better dovetailed with other benefits and funding sources?
I do just want to say out loud, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. An annoying bureaucratic answer too, so I will just own and take responsibility for that as well. As somebody who's both a bureaucrat and still a clinician in community, yeah.
I did want to call out a really interesting thing in the chat, the idea of maybe staging a purposeful simulation with partners of what this might look like. And then I do see, and I think I'm getting some of these messages directly to myself, so I'm going to say them out loud, so we all have them. On the idea of how we can get more feedback on the form is many agencies have committees that include consumer involvement and the form could be reviewed with those consumers prior to beginning benefits. And I think I am caught up, but I really, in this and in, in things moving forward, please hold us accountable if we're not answering or if we've missed something that you brought up. Oh, and I see a hand. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Madhoni Onani. I think right now, and, and thank you so much for this, this space you provided and especially for the CBOs. So some of the CBOs I work with, you know, really tiny, you know, organizations that are, you know, helping out refugees, most of them, English is not a fast language. And most of the time tend to get lost in the shuffle when something like this is rolled out. And sometimes there are unintended consequences where what they are already doing, even though they're just creeping by, is affected that they're not able to, to continue providing the social services. So just going back to what Cheryl, Cheryline and Shakila were talking about, maybe figuring, maybe putting yourself in their shoes kind of, or maybe consulting with them when you make these requirements. Because historically it always ends up that they don't have the resources to meet many of these requirements. And then it just ends up being a situation where no matter what they do, they just can't get a leg up. So even as you roll it out, just bear, bear in mind these CBOs, this type of situations. So that, you know, there, there are populations that tend, still tend to get left behind when this wonderful thing, things like this are rolled out, rolled out. And this time around, I'm just hoping that they don't get left behind again. So what can we do? Can we, is it, does it mean maybe inviting them to the table right now and discussing with them how they, what models they're using to provide these resources? And therefore the requirements that you come up with will be able to be more helpful than, you know, than a hindrance. So that was, you know, just some thoughts going on in my mind about these communities. Thanks.
Thank you so much for sharing that. And I know that, for instance, this session that we're having right here is, is going to work for some people and might not be the best way for us to interact with other folks. So I do also, really, I would love to hear if there are voices who you think are not here that we can do a better job reaching out to. I, we continue to really struggle with how we get the capacity to be everywhere at once and we can't do that, but we can be more places, so. I, I'm going to go ahead and drop my email into the chat just so that you all can let us know if there are people, organizations immediately on your radar who might not be on mine. I want to offer that as one small way, not the only way in which to interact with us. But I do want to keep growing out who, who we're in communication with. And so I'm going to offer that as one route that we can start either, whether it's to get information about these sessions to more people. Or if there are maybe climate-specific, nutrition-specific, housing-specific conversations we can be having. The more we know, the better we can connect with people. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll take you up on the email and get in touch with you. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you. And I am wondering, we are just about out of time, so I'm going to click through a few slides and then open it up again to see if there's any final things for today. But I do want to make sure I say out loud that we really hope you'll join us again on October 10th. That's the next session in this series. And if you're here today, that means that you are signed up for the 10th. But if you have any questions or concerns about making sure you get in there, please don't hesitate to reach out. And we were talking about it earlier today, but just to say one more time, we really hope to dig into this service and eligibility need form more intentionally and more directly with you all. So I don't feel right giving homework, but if I were to find a better way to frame that ask, if you take a look at the form in advance of us meeting, just to be ready to have that conversation. And I don't know about you, but for me, that means probably putting a bunch of comments into a document so that I can organize my thoughts to say them out loud. Whatever you need to be able to feel like you can participate fully in that, let us know if there's anything we can do. We really want to talk through more of those details and I think that's going to take probably the whole two hours. We don't currently have a set topic for October 24th, but I have heard a lot of good contenders in these sessions, so we'll seek to give you more guidance on that by the 10th at the very latest, so you know what to expect from the session on the 24th. And depending on what we have available, maybe we'll give you some options or we'll start to lay out, you know, once we get into October, November, what, what this series is going to look like moving forward so that we're meeting your needs and we're getting you up-to-date information where we can do something with the feedback. I do see some questions, feedback about recordings and just the logistics of the sessions. So I'll talk a little bit more about that, which is that right now, we have, we've been emailing as the best way to get you all information, but we have set up a YouTube playlist on the backend so that you can have access to all of the recordings that we've made of these sessions all at once. So I'll make sure to send you that link. These aren't yet fully on the public site and that's because we want to be intentional about transparency, but also making sure that we don't open you all up to getting unwanted attention from, from anyone who might be accessing incorrectly what we have. So we're trying to toe that line between transparency and and protecting our partnerships. But absolutely everyone here, you'll be getting multiple emails with these resources in a few different ways. And I hope that helps at least in the meantime. And you are welcome to share with colleagues. I would say with other organizations or folks within your own organization. And, and if you have ideas for ways in which we can share well, also always happy to hear ways in which we can be doing this better than we have. We're slowly but surely improving. You may have noticed, we tried really hard anytime we're using an acronym to put it on the slide itself this time. It was a little hit or miss, I noticed. Didn't catch all of them in time. We're going to try to do small things like that to make this a little bit more accessible, knowing that these are some pretty complex topics and conversations that we're having. Go through two more slides. Just want to remind you also that a lot of the things that we've been talking about, there are more details if you want to read large documents on our public site and that we can link directly when we email you these resources, which is we have a updated services protocol that went live in August on our public site, as well as a new initiatives implementation plan that is publicly available as well. And you're always welcome to email us, to look at our website. We do, you may have noticed that we had a newsletter go out. I'm really excited about this. It's our first external newsletter came out last week, so it's begun. We are communicating in new ways with you all. And this link here will get you into that external newsletter mailing list if you're not yet on it. Whew, I talked a lot just now. So I wanted to pause and thank you all for your collaboration, for being here, for your partnership. Also to thank our subject matter experts, especially Meg and Lisa and Jessie for putting your faces on this project. That means a lot to us, that there are folks who are in the thick of making this work real, who are coming to us directly and sharing. Now I'm going to pause and breathe and see if there's anything else before we hit three o'clock that I can make sure we touch on. I think there's some really interesting questions around how we, like, how public do we make lists of folks who are participating? And that might actually be something that we want to have an intentional conversation with you about, because there might be people at different ends of that spectrum. And also really want to continue the conversations about how we work within the structures that we must use because we are Medicaid, while also really minimizing the way that we are hindering the good work that is out there and the good things that are possible. And I think that might be everything that's in the chat. And we have two minutes. I want to see. We don't need to hold ourselves to being done at exactly three, just because that's the amount of time we have, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't stopping anyone from any last bit of feedback. Or if you, and also a reminder that if you put anything in the chat, we are downloading that and we are using that to make sure that we are working in a responsive way as we continue to bring more content to you and exploring other ways in which we can get information out. I also want to thank you all for your patience on some of the deliverables that are taking us longer to get rolling than we had hoped. But I think we're just about done. Thank you all.